It didn't rise. But I have to be reminded, Bill looks to chuck his neck out at miles, fifty, twenty something dollars over.
Three.
Two thousand.
Tons?
Two thousand.
Twenty two pounds? He's got one in his pocket. Oh, well, I get one.
It's all like a...
I had to think of either the son of a wife scenario or...
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anyone else at this point?
Before you go on, I read your letter to the editor in this week's Wilson County News, and I appreciated your vision and appreciation for the things that are going on in our city. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to old business, one A. Consideration in action to approve the minutes from special meeting February 25th, 2013. Councilman Guedo, have any questions on that?
Correction, let's spell it.
On the two A, Councilman Guedo, this is Mrs. Spel. The name is Mr. Z. Is there any other changes? Could I have a motion to say?
Mayor, I wanted to approve the minutes from special meeting February 25th, 2013.
Okay, may I have a second?
I second you.
Can I have a motion by Councilman Guedo, second by Councilman Guesstiel? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Now, consideration in action to approve the minutes from February 28th, 2013.
I made the mistake, I don't have those minutes. When I was going through them, I thought I had them all. Twenty eight is...
It's the first, twenty fifth is one page, and then the twenty eighth is the next two pages on the page.
Oh. Okay, I do some. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting February 28th, 2015.
Okay, may I have a second? Can I have a motion by Councilman Miller, and second by Councilman Rodriguez? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Consideration in action to approve the minutes from March the fourteenth, 2013.
I move to approve the minutes in March twenty eighth.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Councilman Guesstiel, second by Councilman Guedo? All in favor?
March fourteenth or fourteenth? March twenty.
Fourteenth.
I'm sorry.
Actually, can we come back before we go ahead and call the... Let me bring one little point up here just for clarity. Under new business A, it says Councilman Miller made a motion to approve the ordinance mending the 2012-2013 budget with no change to the hotel motel line items. That almost reads like we were accepting it as it was presented. Should it be with change to the hotel motel line items back to the general fund versus no change?
Is that on the... That's for the twenty eighth?
Yes.
We're voting on the fourteenth. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
That's okay. We can look at that.
We'll get there. I'm confused. Too many minutes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
Okay, now, for the twenty eighth, it says with no change to the hotel motel line items. No change.
Should it... You know, it sounds as if we were accepting it as it was presented. You know, it should read with change to the hotel motel line items back to the pre-proposal. I don't know what the wording should be, but this sounds almost like, yeah, we accepted it as it was presented, and there was no change to it.
That's how the CNA was written.
Mr. Guedo, my recommendation would be that we make the notation on there that you accepted the recommendation and amended it, divided it, go back into the general budget.
That's acceptable.
So, what do you want to hear?
Yes, they... Yeah, this match.
Right.
Does anyone see any other changes needed, corrections?
With that correction, I'll make the motion to approve the meetings from March 28th.
Okay, may I have a second?
I second.
Can I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Guedo? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Okay, now we're gonna go on to presentation, which is two A, Employee of the Month for March 2013. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, council, and citizens. Employee of the Month for the March of 2013 is Rudy Baskis. Rudy has been employed with the city since May 1989. During his tenure, Rudy has worked in every department of the city, and ultimately he reached the level of Public Utilities Director. Recently, with his vast experience, Rudy was instrumental in solving a low water pressure issue, saving both the city and the developer of an apartment complex at the Veterans Park area. Rudy worked with and entered support on troubleshooting procedures dealing with the above-mentioned project. I know it's been voiced, or Rudy has voiced to myself and some of the council and maybe some of the citizens that he is entertaining the thought of retiring some... So, he has initiated succession planning efforts with department supervisors in an effort to make the recommendation to the city manager that if we had somebody on staff that could take on his duties, or if we should seek to hire or advertise for that position. Rudy has been instrumental in all operations of the city, so we wanted to recognize him today.
For item two B, we're gonna move from the bottom. We're gonna move item number...
Fourteen.
Fourteen up to the two B. So, that's quarterly investment report, I'm sorry, CNA to approve the resolution replacing the city's forceful investment policy from April 2006 by Laura Deacon.
Good evening, Mayor, State Councils, and citizens. We asked her to move this so that we can do the approval resolution for the investment report, I mean, excuse me, investment policy. Government, local government co-c，《2256》， the Public Funds Investment Act requires public entities to define, adopt, and review a formal investment strategy and policy, commonly referred to the PFIA. So, we can refer to PFIA, that's Public Funds Investment Act. PFIA requires city council review and approve investment policy annually, and I included and updated investment policy in the packet. We actually replaced, y'all have investment policy from 2006 that needed to be revamped. It was easier just to replace the entire policy. There were several changes two years ago in the state, so, excuse me, so we replaced the entire investment policy, pre-review. The resolution as well was included to show that we're adopting a new investment policy. Investment policy for the state statute says it must be written, it must emphasize safety, liquidity, yield, and public trust of all investment activity. This is your money, your cash, right in the balance, is what it's... Policy must address and designate responsibility control, such as the city manager and I are both invested, are considered investment officers, so we have to go to training. You have to take ten, ten hours every two years. You can actually split it up and go five and five, but most of the classes offered, you go every two years. Policy must... Two B, also includes investment strategies for particular bond and fund groups, and the PFIA also requires quarterly reporting to the governing board of your cash balances. Policy must include reference selection of qualifying institutions, and right now it just talks about having to go through a depository, which Wells Fargo is your current depository. You can also do brokerage, which would be, or Edward Jones, we don't have those kinds of funds that we invest right now. So, if we had those types, we'd have to go per the policy to get them on the list that we can invest our money there. We can also invest our money in pools, they call them investment pools, that are set up by state statute quarterly as well. We have a little bit of money in one of those, Texas Pool, Texas Dollar, NBI, Texas Class, or those types. Most of your money in the city, though, is at Wells Fargo, your main depository. So, if I had, I don't know, is there any comments or questions?
I have a very specific question. You say, "We are replacing a current investment policy." What was not included in our package was that current investment policy, so I could identify what we're changing, and this doesn't clearly spell out what the changes are in the investment.
And it is so different, I mean, it's, this is a updated one that's been recently adopted at two different cities, so we can...
But again, I...
It's been hard to re-line. If you'd like, you can make a copy of it, though.
I'd like to be able to compare, if we are making an update to that policy, I'd like to know what we are...
No, we're not making an update, we're replacing it.
Okay, or we're replacing an existing policy. Before making a decision on it, I'd like the opportunity to review the previous policy.
It's, it's very similar, but it's just that, I mean, we can do that if you want to break back my time.
Do you have it?
I have it, but it's, it's many pages, just like the other.
Again, they're both many pages, but if we're gonna make a decision about replacing a policy, I think it is incumbent upon us to know what the existing policy is and compare that to the new policy, and obviously the justification for the changes you've highlighted to new regulatory pieces, but I'd like to be able to review that. As such, I'll make a motion to table.
Yes, Laura? How do we decide, or who recommends that we change the policy?
It's, you, again, it's a state statute that requires you to write policy. Cities, you can go out and you can find lots of different copies. Again, yours was from 2006, there have been a few changing, changes on the type of investments, the amount of, how you have your money is, is set. There was some wording on strategy, it just was, that policy was written by someone else, so I took one that I actually had in another city, but last year was paid for, for a firm to help write, so...
And what is council's recommendation?
I recommend that she get you a second copy, and as we had discussed, the second meeting of every month is gonna be our financial, so that'll give you substantial time to review that, so get you that other copy, and then you also have the investment report that she, the financial report that goes along with that, so that'll give you some time to review. Table for...
And I'm gonna go ahead and go on to the next one, presentation. It has to be...
Well, we need to...
Do you have a motion on the board?
Motion to table.
Okay, I have a motion to table by Councilman Miller. May I have a second? Councilman Guesstiel, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
We allow her to do her presentation regardless of...
Yes, and that's going to be consideration in action. It's quarterly investment report for October through December 2012.
And it's just a presentation?
Presentation. Quarterly Public Funds Investment Act, here's to receive the quarterly investment report, also your old policy, follow the same, that guideline does not change. So, I'm, this tonight was included, this is the one page. It shows the, again, beginning balances from October 1st to the ending balance of December 31st of your bank accounts. It's the balances at the bank, it's not necessarily money that you have on the books, because you might have outstanding checks, this is the balances from the bank statements, which is the part that has to be collateralized. You have $250,000 in FIA insurance, in addition that you, we received early months, we received from Wells Fargo, pledge holdings report, and the, that information is also at the very bottom of the report, it was a million 535 par value, or book value of 997,425, so you are fully collateralized on your investments at Wells Fargo, which totaled 1,267. You have a small account in Texas class, and it is different, it's a pool, so it doesn't have collateralization such as for pledge security. So, every quarter you'll be getting these, this report on your bank balances.
Can you explain? You said, there's a line in here that says consolidated cash.
Mm-hmm.
Shows an ending of 1.1, and is this just kind of a, what's that?
That is, almost all of your funds, which you talked about, your general fund, your water sewer fund, cemetery, refuges, the unemployment money that's in the small internal service fund, debt service fund, which is your, you know, all those funds we talk about when we're doing the, excuse me, the monthly reports. All of that, those funds all have money in one bank account, and so they're separated on the balance sheet in my system. But again, this is, this doesn't show you that because this is bank, bank account balances, and they're not broken up in the bank, it is one large bank account. It's kept in what, one of my books, on the back of my books, is considered a 99 fund.
Okay, I understand, I understand where you're going. And so, in trying to understand this, this report, everything is listed under Wells Fargo's current bank balances, essentially.
Those are all individual bank accounts.
Right, and then what is NBI, Texas, is that an investment fund?
That's an investment pool.
Okay, so that's all we have set up in investments?
In that investment pool, yeah.
And any other investments?
No.
No CDs or anything like that? Okay, thank you.
We all know investments right now are very slim on the interest rates, so, and then again, as we slowly build up our fund balance, we will probably utilize some of the pools, the pools do make a little bit better interest rate, and that can be negotiated as when you go to do your bank depository, your interest rates. Right now, you can see we're five percent.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to item three, which is our quarterly update for the New Prince Groups.
Did you miss, excuse me, did you miss two C?
Sorry. Two C, presentation, Mission Baseball Community Night, one at the door.
City meeting, Mayor and the council. Once again, Mission's baseball organization will be highlighting South Texas communities. Saturday, May 4th will be Forestville Community Night. North Park Toyota thus purchased tickets and provided them to the city, to the city of Forestville to enjoy. The game will feature a close game fireworks display, the city will provide the first pitch and crowd welcome. Also, we will have a kiosk set up at one of the entrances with bags that the Chamber of Commerce will provide with items highlighting area businesses. There will be pictures highlighting Forestville on the scoreboard throughout the game, and a flyer will be provided to insert in their playbill promoting the city of Forestville. So, I have tickets for that, for, you know, I've given the bulk of them to the Little League, because that's what we did last year, and we had an excellent turnout last year. We had a lot of people out there, and most of those kids with their parents went out there, and we had a very nice big crowd.
So, how many tickets do you have on hand right now?
I have only about a hundred.
What's the date again?
May 4th.
May 4th.
And I do have to get certain...
Who is gonna be throwing out the first pitch for the city of Forestville? Is it gonna be our mayor?
Well, the mayor, we discussed it...
Was considered, but she's got a conflict because she's gotta do the opening for the relay for life.
So, I, I, we contacted Lynn Hopkins with the Little League, and what he's gonna do is his, his coaches in the minors, the older kids, because they can throw far enough, are going to nominate two children on each, boys and girls, on each of the teams, and they will all be provided tickets to go to the game, and that night at the game, you'll do a drawing, and whoever gets drawn, whose ever name gets drawn, gets to go down in the tunnel with the seat and go out and throw the first pitch.
Can I recommend that somebody from our chamber accompany that young man or young woman throwing the pitch, to stand out there and represent Forestville Chamber, who's taking a real lead in this and helping out, Mr. Vipon, or somebody from your board that could accompany that young man?
Absolutely, it's not cricket, not a little word. I'll be there.
I'd like to ask anybody in the audience, if they'd be interested in some tickets?
Yes.
Can we give out tickets?
Well, they can contact me, it's here at City Hall.
Okay, go ahead.
I can give out tickets to anybody who'd like.
And I think our local newspaper would be more than glad to photograph that young man throwing that pitch for...
Well, we do, we, the missions do provide us with pictures, with pictures and, and the, they do, last year they gave us a poster with all the signatures on them, and a CD with all the pictures they take throughout the whole...
We want John Henson.
What's the fourth, the weekend or...
May 4th.
Is it the weekend or is it...
It's, it's Saturday.
I'd be the four boys that have weekends, I'd love to attend, but I won't be able to.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, now, to our reports, person is 4A Corporations, to who's in?
4A Board has been rather busy here the last couple, well, since first January, and even more busy since we passed the resolution to have us head over to the event center operation. One of the first things we found that we take on, without getting too much further down, was the fee schedule. We were concerned that we were not in ballpark with other investment centers and events centers on our fees, and we were giving up a lot of our income because of that. So, we appointed a committee, a subcommittee, to investigate this, and if you'll notice on what you just given, compared by Melissa Posner, you know, Johnson, you'd like to try to do it. We have sort of a summary of how this came about and what we're doing with it. We did some background checking on things, we've gone out and looked at several different places, and we took the following information into consideration when we put this in the operational expense, what we had to operate the building, whether we're making money on what we're doing or losing money on state matters, existing and future revenues, staffing, fundamental responsibilities, lease contract terms, fees charged by comparable event centers, and future use and land use. I've given you the timeline as to how we received all this, and it goes on through the time here, if late funding, we have a meeting of these fees, proposed fees. Our hope is that we bring our center a little more income off of the things that we're doing. It's hard to raise fees, we don't necessarily want to, but we have to consider that we have to be more profitable than what we are. We have to be responsible for making our center as profitable as it can be, if not profitable, at least offsetting expenses. So, what we'd like to do, we made it, our attorney has prepared a resolution, and we have the fee structure in A and B on the back part, and B is, I'm sorry, no, it's just Exhibit A, it's all provided in the one. And we've shown you the description of the item, previous fee and proposed fee, on which Eric, Eric Cherry, there are a number of things that you have to consider when you're looking at this and comparing to other event centers. Every event center has a different fee structure. Sometimes the fee structure is such that all things are included, sometimes they break it down, and so you have to be very careful when you put these parts together, ensure that you're on the right track. And we've tried to do that. Now, we're not asking you to approve these, but we want you to look at all, we want your input, we want any suggestions you might have, and if you have questions, if you'll get them to the city action, they'll get them to us, and we will go over there and try to have answers for you at the next meeting, where we would like for you to consider our, our resolution at that time.
You have any questions? One of the, you know, in discussing this with a number of people, certainly not opposed to changing the rates, but I also understand the challenges that you're facing with that. A couple of points with this, particularly as it relates to nonprofit organizations, and as I see, you've got a 20% discount for those applying in the city that, let me just point your side, that, those that provide services to the residents of Forestville. We have a variety of nonprofits, we have nonprofits that are based in Forestville, we have nonprofits that are based in Wilson County, and then we have nonprofits that are outside the county. I would almost look at a tiered basis for that, in your rate structure or your discount, whatever, and if that's possible or not, I don't, I don't know.
What we tried to do there was to say, people who provide services to the city of Forestville, to the residents of Forestville, and that would take in a lot of things, people of organizations that may be outside the city limits, but do service people from Forestville and things like that. We don't necessarily want, we're not looking to give discounts maybe to nonprofits in Bear County, that services stolen in Bear County, but we, that would have to be our individual base, so we have to make some passes for...
My point here, Mr. Gleason, is that there may be a nonprofit in Bear County that does a portion of their service to the residents of Forestville, they would benefit from a discounted rate, but those nonprofits that are based in Forestville, that do primarily, if not 100% of their work to the residents of Forestville, are probably deserving of a little greater... deserving of a little greater break than maybe somebody out of San Antonio. Hence the tier piece.
I understand, and we'll sort of look at, we tried to fix it a little bit, but it's hard to define in a lot of ways, and I don't know how we're going to do it, but we can try.
The second piece in this that I think is important, that as you propose these increases in fees to increase the revenue, what that's going to change the projected revenue for the event center? In our budget this year, we've looked at, okay, what are the projected rentals based on the previous fee schedule? How much is this going to increase it? What are we going to see in the total numbers? And that may take a little work with Ms. Fagin's.
And it's also going to take a little bit of guesstimation on what, you know, we may lose some clients on, based on the speed structure, but we may gain in other areas, and that's going to take, that's going to be a little bit of a guess, too.
Mr. Glisson, is there a list of nonprofit organizations that have used the facilities in the past?
I can try to develop one.
And their location?
I can try to, we've been fairly muffled about it, but we look at organizations that are not, if they're providing a service, that's one thing. If they're an organization that's trying to make, you know, profit, make a for-profit event, let me say it that way, then we look at that a little bit, too, than one that's just out there trying to provide a service. If you're having, like I was saying, a church is out there doing an Easter egg kind of, that's a nonprofit thing, and if they're not making a profit on it, and it's costing you, whereas someone who's going out there and saying, well, we're going to have this event to make profit, to do something else. And there's all sorts of, like you were saying, there's all sorts of different situations.
Which brings me to the not-for-profits.
Right.
Okay. In that, say, somebody wants to hold a commercial event there that's going to bring great exposure to the city, you know, where do we draw the line? Where do we negotiate the fees? And my point in this is not what is the procedure, but that we define that procedure so that everybody knows, hey, if you're doing this, this is going to be the rate you pay, or if you're doing this, this is the rate you're going to pay. So it doesn't matter that we, I hear rumors, and a lot of that is just rumors, that somebody had an event out there and they paid this much, but somebody else had a similar event and they only paid this much, that we define that process so that whatever it is, we know what X person is going to pay.
I understand what you're saying, and we're going, we will try to define that as best we can. I'm not sure we can cover every point, but we can certainly work on that idea.
You know, the recommendation that I would make, you know, as you put in here, you know, no way can we address any and all of the potential pieces, but that any variance from the published rate schedule must be approved by the board.
Right. And I think we have, we've discussed that, but I don't know if we can confirm it or propose, but we will do that.
But it should be, I feel it should be same price across the board. That way you don't have no deviation.
That's what we tried to do.
And that's the problem. It puts the board in a bind when all of a sudden the board decides we're going to give a variance to this rate and not to this rate. And that's one thing that's, you know, it would have to be something that I would suggest, even maybe something that the Council brought to us and said, this is very important to the city of Florisville, that we provide this event, and then ask us for a variance on it. I'm not sure that we would like, you know, we don't want to be falling out when everybody asks for a variance on what we're doing. And, you know, I would certainly say that maybe if the City Council came to us and asked for a very.
No discount for the City Council.
But anyway, I'm not saying individual, but I'm saying if the Council would want to hold a certain event. Of course, you know, those things that have to consider, but it's very hard, it's very hard to codify something like this every instant that might come up down the future ten years from now. And this is also a work in progress. If we may come back to you in six months and say, we have gone up too much on this particular thing, and we're losing business over it, and we may need to change it, or we have found that we're losing money in this area and need to change that. As I told you when we said, you know, when you asked us to take this over, this is going to be a learning process for everyone. And I was just down in Corpus this week at the American Bank Center down there, and I was talking to some of their executives and the people that are involved in the management of that facility. And they say they learn every day about things that they, you know, they had no idea what's good, and you have to experiment with it, but we can learn as we go. And I think that's going, this is going to be a document that's changing. It's going to have to be fluid.
And I have a question, and I'm hoping this is a typo. On your rentals for the meeting rooms, you have on the 17 by 20, $25 a day, previous fee, proposed fee, $300 a day. That's a big, like, is that correct, or is it a typo?
Per hour.
Okay, so because it says days, so that should be hours.
Okay, I'll look at that.
I was just going to say that there's quite a few where it says per hour.
Are all those rooms, these five rooms, are they all booked already? Is there somebody occupying it every day?
A lot of those rooms are, I guess.
So when they see this increase?
Well, the thing is that some of those, no, this would be for future contracts that we enter into and things like that. We're not saying we're going to go back and charge people who are already booked a facility who have a contract with us.
Mayor and Council, if I may address, I'm sorry, but one of the things that we are working on, and as Councilman Miller stated, Laura Fagin has asked to be included in the 4A Board meetings to assist them with, given the financial reports that they requested, but in addition to make sure that we are compliant with the fees that they are proposing, because this needs to be in an ordinance form, just like everything else. So she has stepped up and said she helps, I know the board's done an excellent job in the work that they've done. We can tweak whatever we need on that field, so I think that.
So in lieu of a resolution, you're suggesting that we do this in an ordinance?
Well, this resolution is just from the board to the council. Once we accept it or once we finalize it, it needs to be in an ordinance form, on a fee ordinance form.
Fee schedule.
Yes. This resolution is from us to you. It's just a proposal, just this is what we've done so far, and I think they're legal and I think to do it in a resolution, so it holds some weight down here.
I was going to see two conclusion on the, it says Friday and Saturday, Friday through Sunday, the set price, but are we looking at maybe holidays? Say New Year's Eve is coming and it falls on Tuesday, would it be at $500, which I think maybe I can look at that at twenty holidays?
In other words, not just the Saturday through Sunday time, but maybe include certain holidays?
Certain holiday, like, we can't let it go for $500. Somebody wants to come in and make an event for $500.
I understand what you're saying. Our weekly rate, if you don't follow what I'm saying, our weekly rate during the week is less than our weekend rate. Our weekend rate is highly booked, and we're in 2014 on that. But our weekly rate is what we're trying to bring out, our during-the-week rate, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And those times, we had it priced less because we're trying to encourage more people to come there during, and use it during those times.
Do you know, are there any federal holidays?
I'm saying more like the New Year's Eve. If I want to make a New Year's Eve, that's going to probably be $500 to use a facility where I want it for the next five years, and I want to book it for.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah. It's cheaper that day because, but the holiday makes it special day, and it depends on, like, we need to look at that. I understand the point. And I appreciate you bringing these up because these are things that we didn't necessarily come up with in the meetings. And sometimes when you're looking at something like this, you get involved in the tree, the forest down here sometimes, but other than that.
Well, we commend you and your board for the hard work that you've done. This is small, but it's.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the board for the most problem putting this together. I was in Corpus this week, and I didn't see this, but I got there and said, you, she's done an excellent job this year.
Mr. Glisson, when is this coming back to the Council?
We were looking at somewhere in the two weeks. I think you have another meeting on what day? 28, I believe it was. And during that time, if you were going to have, after we come back, we have a plan of having a meeting scheduled immediately after your meeting, while not making the same date, like Monday after, taking into consideration things that you bring to us. And we realize we haven't created the absolute involved product here. So when you come back to us and say, we're concerned about this, we're concerned about that, we can then go back with some ideas and try to fix those things that you're looking at. And it's not going to be, it's not where we're arguing with you about what we're going to do, it's that we need to mesh our work together and work together on bringing this as a unit.
Can I consider a fee for the wine hunt that y'all have out there?
Yeah, I understand that. That's something else that we look at and talk about, such things, you know, in the pricing of your building, we're competing with a lot of different prices for a lot of stuff. And the way you price it is, you know, some places if you pay 15 or $1,800, that includes everything. But then other places, you can pay $2,000, and maybe it doesn't cover the technical costs, it doesn't cover the use of the screens, and all this stuff. So you have to really look at what you're covering on there. It makes it very difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Glisson, for your hard work.
Mayor. We've got on new business, item A, we've got Deanna Civic from our friends at TCEQ that drove down from Austin, we can move them up to do their presentation, so we can similarly do a presentation by our board.
Is anyone following that, Council? That would be fun. Move on then to new business A, consideration of nation's TCQ contract on air quality monitoring system. Could you state your name for the request, please?
I'm Deanna Civic. Want to get two of them?
Could you repeat it because I'm timing here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm just.
Just regarding the mic industry.
Okay. My name's Deanna Civic, I'm with the Texas Commission on Air Quality. This is for a site agreement to replace an air monitoring station at Weller Wells Hill.
The Council, the package has the agreement from TCQ. TCQ, of course, is our state regular authority agency. They have talked to the 4A Board at one time about putting a monitoring station at the event center site, but because of some drainage studies that we were waiting on, we asked them to hold off. They found a second site that was adequate for what they needed, which is up of Hospital We did talk to Mito Chaco, who's our water production supervisor, and make sure that this was acceptable to him to have this air monitoring device at that location without affecting any of his work. He said it was fine with it. Rudy Vasquez also looked it over, and our attorney reviewed the contract, and as far as we know, other than any questions that you may have, we ask the Council to approve this agreement.
What is the purpose of this air quality monitoring center?
Oh, this is a serious question.
This will be to monitor the regional ambient air quality.
Part of the statewide system to keep track of the level of quality in our area?
Is there a mild radius that it's covered, or is it just a particular area?
It depends. Typically, we should keep place monitors around Texas so that we can get a broad view. For this one, it will be dependent, obviously.
Will we be able to get, monitor these results, or where would we get this information?
You can see all of monitoring data at our website, the Texas Commission on Air Quality website.
And how is it going to be affordable?
This is just to give you a kind of peek into what your air quality is looking like. These monitors, we're considering automated gas chromatograph and ultraviolet, so this will show you a couple of different parameters.
Be live data that we'll be able to get, or is this?
There's approximately a three-day delay.
One of the advantages, I guess, is to ensure that the air is safe for our citizens, and then we will be the first to receive that information. And just with all the activity, activity, I'm sorry, that we've got with the Eagle Ford, we can ensure that we've got access to that information for anybody else in our area.
Any issue with the agreement, Council?
No, there isn't. The state has, Mr. Miller, we made note of it in here, the state has a true obligation about liability indemnity, and generally speaking, the state emphasizes its sovereign immunity, but other than the usual water plate, so the state is protected from nuisance suits, another matter is the standard state contract.
And other than providing the site, the city has no other obligation?
Right. Any vandalism to the site or anything, it's all, it's, okay.
With that, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the TCEQ air monitoring agreement and 1404 Hospital Boulevard.
I had a motion by Councilman Miller. May I have a second?
How's that, lady?
Second by Councilman Miller, he is all in favor. I'll close. Motion carries. Bye, Senator. Now we can go back to three, me, or someone there from the FEDC?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those that don't know me, my name is Raymond Fongis, and I was placed into the interim executive director position with the FEDC back in mid-January. My report today says to what has been taken twice in the last two and a half months since I've been in there. The FEDC has had a number of projects that have been ongoing up to this point, and we have continued to follow up on them. We've had to do some changes in some of, in some of the way the procedures were being handled, but I think so far we're headed in the right direction. I think last month, we've waited half a year of our fiscal year, and our main concentration right now is Rancho, Business Park, which is on Long Market Road 537. When this project was developed, the 304 acres, which right at present time were almost, we have almost filled the area with the exception of a couple sending tracts of land out there. Nevertheless, water, electricity, has been provided throughout. We've been working with the toll home company, trying to get the right of ways. We have just recently been granted the permit for the main entrance. I think this main entrance has been in the process of being approved, and up until almost a little bit over a week ago, we finally got a notification from TECOS that it has been approved. from Texas that it has been approved. So now we're in the process of getting our engineer to work up a plan for the bidding process for the entrance. We definitely have to provide the promises that were made to all the tenants that are out there right now. A lot of the tenants that were promised a road within ninety days have presented their purchase of property. There's no way Florida's equity that this was going to be completed, even up to now. You know, it's gonna take a little while, you know, because right now we're looking at all the financial monies that are in...